We're gonna start a little bit. We have a guest here this morning, a young lady. Scott, do you want to introduce that young lady to the commission and to our audience, please?
This is my granddaughter Morrison, son of my daughter, daughter of my son Joshua.
Okay, straight. Well, welcome, welcome. What grade are you gonna be in? Second grade, third grade? Wow.
That's alright.
Well, you having a good time with grandpa and grandma. That's good. Welcome. You can welcome back anytime you want, okay? Alright. Well, welcome to their Tuesday, August 5th, where the Lincoln County Commission. We've got a rather abbreviated agenda today, but we've got certain things that we go through. We need to approve our agenda. Before that, is there any public comment on our agenda at all? If not, we need a motion to approve our agenda. Commissioners?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Aaron's motions. Comis- Pardon?
You need to change the order of it?
Oh, yes. Thank you. My madam auditor corrected me.
Well, that'll be my-
Again.
That'll be my motion, to make that correction.
Yep, we're gonna move Hilt, who is number two on the regular business, to number four, as per his request. And that's part of your motion, Commissioner, and I'm sure that-
Yes.
Commissioner Otten is the same way. No other comments? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes. Next, we move to our consent agenda. Is there any public comment on our consent agenda? If not, commissioners, we need to approve our consent agenda.
Move to approve.
Second, Otten.
Aaron's motion, Otten's second. Comments on the part of the commission? Hearing none? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes. Which brings us to our regular business portion, and number one item. Paul Anderson, you got something on soil conservation?
Yes, I do. I have representatives from the Lincoln County Soil Conservation District. They will be giving a brief presentation on what it is they do, and then will be available for any questions. I don't know why that went straight to a print.
Okay, Jeremy. Would they-
Just go ahead and introduce yourself.
Naaman, welcome.
Good morning. My name is Jeremy Sogstedt, from the Lincoln Conservation District. So do we just click to go through this, Paul?
Yeah. Should just click. Yeah, they should just click to go.
So I'm not sure how familiar you are with what the district actually does. The Conservation District generally is the same geographic boundary as most of the counties in the state, but not all of them, so there is a different number of districts. This shows there are 69 districts compared to our 66, I think it is, counties. The main purpose of the district is really a connection from the public to the resource management. Basically, we work with different agencies to provide information on how to best manage the local conservation for the landowners and for the, even the residents. Let's see. And then gets kind of into the legal stuff. We're not a nonprofit. We are not authorized to levy taxes, so, you know, we're separate, like I said, from the county, but we can act as a business. We can raise funds from work performed. We do not have anything like eminent domain. We cannot mandate conservation practices, so our main objective is to educate and to advise people on the best way to do conservation practices. So we assess the needs of the people and the land in the district, and we work with people to meet those needs. Again, we are the link between the land users and the service providers. So again, we use funds to, mainly for education, public awareness, and to adopt conservation practices. And we look at long-range plans as well as short-range plans, but we really keep our eye on the long range. Again, it says there. It talks about supervisors. Just skip through that. So that's kind of a summary. We really look at input from the public. So again, the supervisors, they're kind of the guys, the antennas out in the public, and we go from what people tell them and what people tell me. People call in with questions, and then we implement based on those needs.
Jeremy, you want to back up a couple of spaces from there?
How do I back up, Paul?
Maybe a arrow?
Maybe not.
Sorry. No, you're good.
I didn't mean to mess up your presentation.
No, you didn't.
You can just keep it here, too. Do you know which page we're looking at?
No, that's far enough. Go, keep going, Paul.
We skipped over the supervisors. Did you have a question there?
Yeah, about supervisors. Who are they? Who are they, and where are they located, or something like that? Is there somebody that we have from Lincoln County, or is there, are they just elected, or how do they select them?
So they're up for election. We haven't had much public interest as far as people running for the elections, so since I've been around the last few years, it's just been appointed positions. People that have shown interest in conservation, usually farmers. That was on our packet that I sent in, in our request. We have typically five super, on our board of supervisors. We have Dave Gillespie, Greg Huffman, Eric Poppins, Neil Broughton, and then who am I forgetting? And then there's another one. Oh, we have a new one, Dennis Halverson, and Rod Gibbons just joined us recently. So, trying to keep it from, you know, throughout the state for representation. Like I said, most of them are ag background, but not all of them, not necessarily, but yeah.
Thank you for that.
As far as staff, I'm the only full-time staff. I'm the manager, like I said. We usually hire staff as needed in the spring and the fall when we're doing our planting. This is probably our main point right here. Again, we just educate the residents on good conservation practices, whether it's terraces, waterways, anything to prevent soil conservation. The district was originally started to address soil erosion. So it used to be the Lincoln Soil Conservation Office. Then we added water was in there, and now we're just Conservation Office. We cover anything. And then I had-
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now, did you see this?
So, you just place it, you just place it right here, and then hit Doc Cam, and then, yeah.
Oh, I see.
Jeremy, got a question for you.
Yep.
I think when most people think of you, they probably think of tree planting and all that stuff, right?
Yep.
So, what would you, you know, for the folks who are listening at home, or folks who have never had any interaction with you, what are the one or two biggest things that your work, that you guys work on? You know, what are the big projects, and how does that benefit folks?
As far, well, I don't know about projects, but we did, I have another handout, but we had, two years ago, we did a big project with Harrisburg School District, to do more of a hands-on type of learning center area. We planted a bunch of trees and native grasses at their new freshman academy, so that's gonna be an ongoing education outreach where the school can go out. And so we were mainly involved with the planning and implementation of that. The planning was both myself and the NRCS, Corey Kuzar, who's also here, and then the implementation was myself and then our crew. And so, we really stress with people on trees, to plant the right tree for the right spot, locally in our area, but more specifically on the ground. And we look at soil types, and then look at purpose of what people want to do, and then we look at species. And the same thing with grass, when we get into that same project that we had, like we did at that school. So, that's how, that's where we are with everybody. So we do bigger projects, like with the school, but we do that with every single landowner. So, I was just gonna go through here on the sheet, you know, our main mission, like we talked about, our activities. We provide information, that's probably the number one thing. We help develop these plans, again, for the species, and then the layout and how that's gonna look for our area. We work with the NRCS, SDSU Extension, and anybody else that'll help us, Pheasants Forever, other agencies, game fishing parks. Sometimes they'll help provide seed or seeding, and funding from different sources, too, to do these things. And then we have specialty equipment for these, specifically for grass planting and for tree planting. So we have a narrow, like an eight-foot disc, and a seven-and-a-half-foot tiller, a tree planter, a fabric installer, or weed barrier installer, and then no-till grass drill that we would use for areas, small areas like waterways, conservation areas. We also do pastures for people. Anything that's smaller, I mean, you know, you know what the big field equipment is like when they go in to do, you know, 80, 160 acres. We're on the other spectrum of that, to get in those small areas. And so we provide the services of planting the trees, and then we also provide, you know, just the products that people want to plant their own trees. If it's less than 100 trees, a smaller project, then we'll do all the same information of plant, planning, the tree plan, and then the information on how to do it and where to do it, and then just provide the products. So that's, you know, the 12, but we do, barefoot trees is our main business. That's what we were advised to do with extension. That's the main thing that takes best to the site and does, has the best success. And then we do the potted trees, and then we also, you know, sell the fabric or tree tubes and grass seed to different people. And I think somebody was wondering, or Paula directed, you know, what are your, the funds that we get from Lincoln County, what are they used for? They're not used, we don't put them in a special pot, they're not specifically designated. But again, our main expense is probably to provide the information, because we put a lot of time into the tree plans and the grass plans, and the phone calls and the emails, the outreach. So it's to provide these informations to all residents of Lincoln County. And then, like, what is the value of this? You know, how can you look at your dollar for your output? I don't have a good way to measure that. I mean, we just had three good examples. We have our Emerald Ash Bore that's gone through, that we're very aware of. You know, that's where we're pushing diversity and not always planting the same trees, and then we're trying to deal with, how do we deal with this past, I don't know about mistake, but it's just what we did before, we would do rows of ash trees. So then we have specialists that will actually kind of do renovation tree plans, where now you have big trees and you have some dead trees, how do you address that? So we'll work with people on that. You know, last year we had the flooding, so we'll work with erosion control, making sure things are seeded down, looking for deep-rooted plants, needed plants when we can. And then, of course, last week, you know, with this big wind, tree protection is huge. So this is just an ongoing thing. You maybe saw this spring in the paper. One of our supervisors handed out the tree seedlings to the kids at school. We were able to get a piper's auction over by the interstate. They sponsored it, and they bought, paid for some trees that we were able to hand out to both Lennox and Canton schools. And so this outreach is just continually ongoing to deal with things when they come along, like the ash bore, or the windstorms, or... So then on the other side, kind of looks at our timeline as far as what we do. Somebody was wondering, you know, how much time do you spend in the field, and what do you do when you're not in the field? But, you know, it just feels like we just got done with spring, to me, because I'm just finishing up invoicing and still wrapping up the needs of what happened with the equipment and all the things that we were doing. And now we're looking at coming up next month, well, now we're already in August. August is usually when we start doing our fall seeding. This is our fall seeding season for CRP sites. It's a good opportunity for pasture and other things, but people call throughout the year and say, you know, when do I start doing my tree planting? Really, July is the best time, and that's when we start talking to people about what they want to do, because if there's a site that needs specific preparation, we do that in July and August, and even September, to get it ready for next spring. So, I don't think I need to read through all this. I don't know if I'm going long on time, but that just kind of lays out, you know, it's an ongoing thing throughout the fall and the winter of getting tree plans ready, seed plans ready. We have training events throughout the year for myself, just trying to keep people updated. Really, we're handing a lot of phone calls, myself and Corey and people in the office, on people with questions on what do I do and what do I plant. And then, of course, spring is a really big season. It starts, you know, getting ready in February, March, getting staff lined up, equipment and everything else. I think that's all, really, it feels like I'm talking too much. Do you have any questions about that specifically?
Do you have questions, commissioners, for Jeremy and his-
Otherwise, I'll have Corey come up and talk a little bit more about-
Corey, do you want to-
...the district talks about?
Thank you, Corey.
Thank you. Pretty fancy technology, I like that. Alrighty. Well, I work for Natural Resources Conservation Service. We house the Lincoln Conservation District in the office, so I am on the federal side. Just do a real quick brief through here. We're celebrating 90 years in business this year, so 1935, we started as the SCS, or Soil Conservation Service. In 94, we moved to NRCS, where we currently are today. So, we work really heavily involved with Lincoln Conservation Service. So, CTA, our Conservation Technical Assistance, that is what we spend the majority of our time on. So, just as Jeremy touched on, is the education portion of it. I do a lot of the same thing, where some of our overlap changes is I'm generally working with producers in the farm program. So, producers that are generally coming into Farm Service Agency that have farm records established. With that being said, the phone rings all the time, and we never turn away to customers or potential customers. So that's where I work really closely. Jeremy and some of our other partners, maybe they're gonna be customers of the NRCS, or, you know, maybe they are just customers of the county, or Lincoln County. And so, so we can bounce that off each other, depending on workload. Jeremy touched on Emerald Ash Bore, some of these windstorms, Dora show a few years ago. We kind of got a mess with the trees in the county right now, so we're getting a lot of phone calls in, and there's a lot of education to do in the county as far as trees, what to do with these ash trees. So we have a large workload ahead of us, so it's important to have that education out there. I don't have the staff in my office to do it myself, so it's really important to have partners like Jeremy, and outside of Lincoln Conservation as well. So, kind of on the bottom here, we'll touch on, and Jeremy touched on, too, we work with a wide variety of partners. It makes, makes everything work. But so, like I said, we're on the federal side. Then I just did touch on some of our federal programs, Conservation Reserve Program. So, so that is mostly our grass programs. Farm Service Agency administers that program, but we do the technical planning on that. And then that also does include some trees, so riparian trees, or new shelter belts for farmsteads, or field windbreaks. So, we do get into some trees there. We do not have any equipment with the NRCS. Unfortunately, I would say, none of our producers do, so that is where we lean heavily on Lincoln Conservation for the assistance and the equipment they have. So that's a really good partnership, I'm really glad they're in the office. We don't suggest to our producers where to go, but there is very few resources out to plant trees, so it kind of makes sense that they walk across the aisle and talk to Jeremy there in the office. So, just real briefly, I know we're running short on time, just a couple of our other programs, I'll touch on Equip, our Environmental Quality Incentives Program. Just kind of noted there, that's our flagship program. 25 active contracts right now in the county, and then we got, we got over 30 active applications. So, that's going to address almost any resource concern in the county, and that's truly what we do, is we go out and look at any resource concern, and that's how we determine our funding. So, we need some kind of soil erosion, wind erosion, wildlife is a resource concern, especially when we're talking about grass and trees. So, we're always looking for some kind of resource concern out there to address, to reasonably use taxpayers' dollars, so... But that being said, once we talk about planting grass, planting trees, Jeremy touched on it, too, we just don't have a ton of that equipment out on the landscape. Our larger corn bean alfalfa producers generally don't have that equipment, and if they're talking about doing it once every five, 10 years, or planting grass waterway because we have a new cut or new erosion, or planting terraces, a lot of times they don't have that equipment to plant that little bit of grass, so... That is, that is important, and that's why we need our Conservation District on the landscape to help us out and support us, too. Last one there, CSP, Conservation Stewardship Program. A little more of an incentive-based program, five-year program, that really encourages our farmers and ranchers to increase conservation across their landscape. Kind of a more in-depth program. We got less, less contracts and less applications, but that one is starting to pick up a little steam here through the county, so... Then on the bottom, I just kind of listed, and Jeremy touched on that. We don't do this by ourselves. We don't tend to, tend to say we do. It's not an "I" thing, it's definitely a "we" thing, so we have a whole host of partners. That's just a short list of them there, so... That is kind of what we do. We support each other, we work really good together, and we need each other, so... With that, I'd say, if you guys got questions, we're open to questions. For anyone else here, I did leave some business cards, or just a quick printout or copies of these, if anyone else would like.
Corey? Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I had a fellow yesterday talk about Equip. Can you give an example, like, how that works?
Yeah, absolutely. So, I touched on that resource concern. Generally, a producer will come into my office with that resource concern or idea. You know, generally, maybe our producers aren't thinking resource concern, but they might come in with an idea or something they want to do on their farm or ranch. They'll sit down with me, and we'll talk about it. Generally, I'll jump in the truck and I'll go up to that farm, and we'll walk through it, we'll talk through it, we'll start to develop a conservation plan. We'll make, we'll make it start to work for my program requirements, make sure it works for them financially, it makes sense. Then it goes through that application process, so we rank our highest months to lowest months, and then in the spring of the year is generally when we determine our batching dates. And then if we, if we can fund them, then we have some assistance to start implementing, you know, a host of practices. Anything for grass waterway, tree planting, things you really can't see on the landscape, like nutrient management, you know, no-till, reduced till, so, almost a host of any, any kind of resource concern you could think of, we do address through that Equip program.
Yeah, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any other questions for Corey? Jeremy, I got a question. That tree planting machine-
Yes.
Everybody should have an opportunity to sit on there and plug those trees as they go by. It's, you need a rhythm. How old are all that equipment that we have there? Because we've got that and the cul-de-packer. I mean, how old is that stuff now? Is that getting some age on it?
It's probably older than me, I don't know. I can't honestly say. But it's been around a long time.
It's been around, oh, at least 23 years old, yeah.
So is the demand for, you know, for tree planting or groves, are they staying constant, or are they on the increase, or what would you, what's our observation?
Yeah, you would think, once you plant them, then you're done, right? But there's always the maintenance part, there's always some trees die out, like I talked about with the ash, then you have those iner rolls, or whatever rolls were there that need to be replaced. So there's the maintenance aspect. And you guys know the growth in the northern part of the county, all those people want trees, a row here and a row there on the prevailing sides. We usually do the north and west side. So we have a lot of acreage people that come in, and we try not to compete with, you know, it's not, we're not landscapers, you know, we're not gonna be planting those bigger trees that the landscapers do, and that's where we try to not cross that line, but we provide the need, the service where there's a need. But yeah, there's quite a need, because every time there's a new landowner, a new acreage going on, and even the older acreages, the old belt is dying out, now you're putting a new one next to it, or addressing that.
So the demand is there. Any other questions for Corey or Jeremy? If not, thanks, you guys. Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your job.
Yes, thank you for your time.
Yep. I know we have a couple of members of the board here. Are, you got a comment or anything about you'd like to make?
I'm Jeremy Covert at all.
Okay, good. And it's busy and all kinds of good stuff. Alright, well, thank you. Next, we will get our Veteran Service Officer. That's coming up. David, it's your show right now.
David Ackley, Lincoln County Veteran Service Officer. So we're just gonna kind of briefly touch on that, this is a disabled veteran property tax exemption and paraplegic. So, to be eligible for this, veteran will have to have a rating through the VA, so permanently and total disabled to be eligible for the disabled veteran exemption. And then the paraplegic, they will have to have that rating to reflect that they have that paraplegic rating with the VA. So what we do, when I meet with veteran and then they get their ratings, we cover all the benefits they may be eligible for. So I do discuss the property tax exemptions, all the other state benefits. So if you're permanent and total disabled, you also can be eligible for the special license plates, state park entrance reduction, the entrance fee is waived. And so, with the list of veterans, though, I have about 110 that I show that are eligible for these programs, but of that, some of the veterans may have moved, and our records aren't updated, because a veteran does have options. Obviously, I encourage them to work with a Veteran Service Officer, such as myself or another county Veteran Service Officer, or the state even has Veteran Service Officers. So, when we do that, then we can fully inform them of all their benefits, and if I have the POA, which means I have representation with them to the VA, that's how I would see their records in a report that I can pull. But they do have options, so they could work with another organization such as PVA, DAV, or even self-file, and a lot of veterans do self-file. So, then I don't see their information in our reports, because the POA isn't- So then I don't see their information in our reports, because the POA isn't there for And so just to kind of follow up on the communications, every time a veteran is rated with a service-connected disability, they get correspondence from the VA and myself. So in the letter, each October, it's called a summary of benefits, so they'll get a letter stating what their benefits are, and that includes what their service-connected disability is and what their compensation is. And in that letter, it does state, if you have any questions, this letter is, and I'll just kind of read that part, this letter is a summary of benefits you currently receive from the Department of Veterans Affairs. We are providing this letter to a disabled veteran to use in applying for benefits, benefits such as state or local property or vehicle tax relief, civil service preference to obtain housing entitlements, free or reduced state park annual memberships, or any other program or entitlement in which verification of VA benefits is required. And it also says, you should contact your state or local Office of Veterans Affairs for information on any tax, license, or fee-related benefits which you may be eligible for. And that's kind of what I have to cover about that. I know, kind of was asked by Commissioner Aaron's to come and give a presentation on that, so if you have any questions or comments about that, I'd be happy to help out.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. So I think it was last, was it last week, David, you and I were talking about this?
Yes.
And, Mr. Chair, what we decided to do was, I had a conversation with Commissioner Otten here about veterans' letter, and then as a result of that conversation, I was thinking, okay, hold on, I'm going to call David here, because, believe it or not, we have, you know, it's like David was saying, we actually have a list of these people who are eligible for tax relief, which is unique, because normally, we wouldn't know everybody in the county who qualifies for every program, but when you're dealing with the VA and those sorts of things, we do to a certain extent. So what we're going to do is, David is going to reach out to these people, these hundred and ten veterans who may or may not already have applied for the property tax deductions, and we're not just going to sit back and wait for them to apply, we're going to go to them, and we're going to say, do you want to take advantage? Do you want some free money? Do you want your money back that you worked so hard for? And, you know, these people serve their country and they're eligible, but we're not just going to sit on our thumbs here and wait for these people to apply. We're going to go to them, and we're going to put the sheet of paper in front of them, and we can't control whether they apply or not, but what we can control is we can go to them and make the invitation. So we want everybody in the state to know that Lincoln County wants these people to know that they're eligible and that we invited them to apply. And frankly, I hope this catches on in every county around the state. I hope every county will do this same program, where they'll go to their eligible veterans and they'll say, do you want your property tax relief? So we're going to start it here, and David's going to reach out to these folks. I'm actually surprised that there were this many people on the list. I thought it was going to be a lot smaller. But this is good, and this is a good first start, and it's a good time. We're here in August, and they have to apply by November, and so we'll get the letters out the door, and then hopefully, they can return their application in time by November to get their property tax relief. So that's, it's a good update, I'm glad we're doing this.
Right. And to expand on that, so I did kind of forget to cover that, that my process will be to go through, so some of them, obviously, I have a list of veterans, they might not be owner-occupied, so we'll have to, you know, go through that, see if they're eligible based on, you know, what the regulations are for that. But yes, I will get hold of them, we'll go through and see how we can help them out. So one other thing I wanted to point out while I was standing here, so Purple Heart Recognition Day is going to be Thursday, August 7th, and it's just to recognize veterans, that service members who've been injured or killed in action due to enemy action. And two quick stats, Purple Heart was established in seventeen eighty-two, and it's the oldest military decoration. And as reported by the National Purple Heart Hall of Honor, over 1.8 million Purple Heart medals have been awarded to service members since the medal's inception in seventeen eighty-two. So if you can take a moment on Thursday and reflect on that, think about those that have sacrificed so much for us.
Anything else, David?
That's all I have.
I'm glad to hear, and thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Aaron's, I want to make note, and thank you for your leadership on being proactive, on letting our veterans know about a program property tax reduction. I think this is something that all veterans certainly deserve, but from my vantage point, I thank you for taking the leader and making Lincoln County an example of what can be done with good government. So David, we're also a Purple Heart county, aren't we? Aren't we? Didn't we get that passed here?
Yes.
We're a Purple Heart county.
Correct.
Yeah. I see that signs that are on certain roadways and stuff like that, so.
Yeah. On the ones entrance to the county, on the state highways.
Any other questions or comments from the commission?
I just want to say thank you to Joel, to Commissioner Aaron's for bringing this forward as well.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, we now have, let's see, our auditor coming up to talk about our publishing of our provisional budget.
Yep, what I'm requesting today is just the authorization to publish the provisional budget and set the hearing for September. I've attached everything that I would be publishing, and I don't know if you have any questions, if there's anything you want to change before I publish it. We do have to get it published, because we have to have it published for ten days prior to the hearing, so. If there's anything in the budget right now that you want to remove, we can always do it at the hearing. So this is not passing the budget, it's just authorizing me to advertise it and set the hearing.
So is that clear to everybody? We're just following the guidelines, and it's just publishing, not passing. So any comments for our auditor? If not, the chair will entertain a motion.
Do you want to do a public comment?
Oh, public comment, oh my God, yes, public comment. Okay. Now the chair will entertain a motion.
I'll move Commissioner Otten.
Commissioner Otten moves. Do we have a second?
Second to publish the budget.
Second by Commissioner Aaron's. Comments or questions? Hearing none? Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Aaron's?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes. Which would lead us to, oh, there you are, Harold. Come on up, Harold, you've been a busy man.
Good morning, Commissioners. I apologize for disrupting the schedule. Sheriff Swenson and I were in a Homeland Security meeting, where we had to cut about a million dollars out of the funding requests, so it wasn't quite done, but I came up here anyway, so. Anyway, regarding last week, I was in Pierre that evening, getting ready for a class on Tuesday that I was supposed to be in, and about nine twenty-two, I get a call from the Fire Chief in Hudson, Justin Tunison. He says, can you come down here? I think we had a tornado go through town. I said, well, I'm in Pierre. So I started making phone calls, and after about an hour, I said, I got to get home, so I drove home and was home a little bit and went down to Hudson the next morning with our incident command trailer. That first night, county was out clearing roads all over the place, and I asked Jared Narum to take the big payloader down there, which he did with a grapple. We got loaders together just so we could clear the streets, get people in, get responders into town and make sure nobody was hurt. So once that was done, pretty much shut down for the night, and when I got down there the next morning, had a meeting with the mayor and the fire chief and a few other folks. There were six fire departments over in there the first night, just helping to get everything organized, make sure nobody was hurt. Had the Highway Patrol, Sheriff's Office, and so we had a lot of response. We could have had more, but we decided we didn't need any more. I talked to Sheriff Swenson, we could have had some other people come in, but he said we've got enough down here now, so. The next morning, after that meeting, we figured out that the Fire Chief, Justin, knew a lot of contractors and people that could bring in equipment to help, so he was made our Operation Section Chief and coordinated a lot of that response, along with the mayor and myself. And everything we did, we ran past the mayor to make sure it was okay, in case it would cost money, that there'd be a way to fund it. And I think a lot of it, I know the county had an excavator loaded with a grapple and five or six trucks down there for three days straight. And some outside contractors came in, Persing Excavating was one of them, and when somebody asked him what it was going to cost, he said it's covered, so I don't know, I'm not sure what that meant, if somebody covered it or if he was donating it. But a lot of food was donated. If you were talking to somebody and you do, like I do, and talk with your hands, somebody probably put a burrito in it or something, because they had a lot of donated food, by E-Parts down there, by Pizza Ranch and different places, Sunshine Foods. Water was donated by the Red Cross and a few other places, so there was not a lack of food. We worked, did that out of the fire station the first day, and then the power company, we'll talk about them in a minute here, bought a big generator for the community center, powered that up so we could use that for feeding everybody, the workers and some of the townsfolk too, that didn't have any power. And then when you looked the whole thing over, not a tree or a power line, and that town was not affected. So it was a massive undertaking for the power company, who came in with more trucks and people than I've ever seen. You couldn't look anywhere without seeing a power truck. And they worked twenty-four hours a day. They didn't, when I talked to the rep from Mid-American Energy, she said, we'll be there until that project is done, and they were. But it rained a little bit or what, it didn't slow them down. And I did send an email to the lady that coordinated it all, thanking them for their response. I said, it's some of the best I've ever seen, and that's barring none. I mentioned the donated food. We had to evacuate the nursing home on Tuesday because their generator quit, and we were going to put another one on there, but their generator only ran some lights and door locks that didn't cover their HVAC system. So I said, no sense putting a generator on there, and so they evacuated the nursing home, it was twenty-some people, and we didn't have to do that, because it's kind of ironic, we had a tabletop exercise scheduled for Wednesday evening between the nursing homes in Beersford, Alcestor, Centerville, and Hudson, to where we were going to talk about this very thing. When we got done on Tuesday, Tiffany, the lady from the nursing home in Alcestor, called, and I think we can cancel that exercise because we just did it, you know, so we did call that off. They needed to get all the books out of their library, which was an overbuilding, the roof got damaged and one wall got compromised a little bit, they're probably going to have to be torn down, so we, one of the Mennonite groups had called me the night before and wanted to know if they could come help. I said, well, right now, we don't have a mission for you, but the next day, we did. So I called them back. They came down and moved all those books from the library to the Legion Building, their Memorial Building, they call it now. The next day, the Alcestor Hudson football team came in and got a lot of stuff from upstairs, a lot of pictures and a lot of memorabilia, and they moved that also over to the Memorial Then on Saturday, the cemetery was a mess out there, so I called the Mennonites again. They brought in a crew of about eight to ten people, and with a little help from the mayor on a loader and a small excavator, they cleared that whole cemetery out. They had room in the south to make a big pile, and when you go down to Hudson now, you can find two great big tree piles. And one on the south side is probably two hundred feet long by sixty feet wide and about twenty-five feet high. There's one that's equally as big on the south part of town, excuse me, the north. And then we started a small pile right south of the elevator, because one spot was kind of muddy one morning after it rained, so. Overall, the response we had down there was, you know, you might say second to none. Some of the feedlots around there brought in equipment to help. When you look at the dairy that bought what used to be Haveralls, they had a digester tank there that's got a big dent in it, so that'll have to come down. We had a lot of rail damage in the county, a tremendous amount. I think Sergeant Colson put a lot of those pictures that he took with a drone on the sheriff's Facebook page. The dairy down, I think Mount Hope lost the roof off their parlor, you know, there's a lot of that stuff. If you go down about nine miles south of Lennox, where 105 meets 140, Poppinga family just got devastated. Their home is pretty much good, but everything else is, stopped there Sunday night. And they're getting through that, working through it on their own. And a lot of farmers are doing that, but we have a few acreages that have called and wanted to know what can we get, where can we get help and all this sort of thing, so we're still dealing with some of those things. But the county highway department, I thought, did an extraordinary job. They were down there all three days, plus the night before, and all the roads they had to clear of debris, just to make things passable Monday to Monday night. So commend those folks when you see them. Any questions you might have on the whole operation storm, I guess you could call it?
Well, I know that I had asked you about when the governor had come down to visit, about did, how, I mean, how does all of this work? I mean, I asked you about if we needed National Guard with their equipment, and you said, no, it was all taken care of. And then the inmates from Yankton also came up and helped out. So how does that all work together with the sirens, and who coordinates all that, and how is that done in storms like this?
Well, Monday evening, when the storm warning was issued, they set off the sirens in Canton, Fairview, and Hudson. The one in Hudson didn't go off, but everybody was getting notifications on their phone. Peter Rogers came down from the National Weather Service, I think on Tuesday afternoon, and he said, they can verify a tornado, and by there, looking at straight-line winds or a downburst ninety miles an hour or above, up to a hundred or more. We haven't figured out why that siren didn't go off yet. We're going to work on that when everything settles down a little bit more, but the inmate crews, Secretary Vasco talked to Sheriff Swenson, they say, we're going to bring twenty people with chainsaws. Well, they brought twenty people with one chainsaw. So we changed their mission a little bit to have them clean up after a chainsaw crew to get everything moved to the streets, so the equipment could pick up the trees. They came back a second day, and they were great, so they were diligent in their work, and it worked out better than we thought. What was your other question, Betty?
Yes, well, and then also...
The National Guard.
The National Guard.
Yeah, that's, you have to request that from the governor, and he was down there, and that's, you know, I worked with Secretary of the Department to get him down there, it's a lot of coordination goes on. Secretary... Secretary Perry called me several times in emails and texts. So, that's a little bit of a disruption, but everybody, you know, was glad to see the governor and his wife came along too. And they, I got them, you know, side by side with the sheriff and so he could take him around town and show him exactly what had happened. And the National Guard, it'd be another agency to coordinate. And in a small town like that, we had all the people that we dare have there without people running into each other doing things. We had, we kind of split the town in half. Everything on the north side went to the north tree pile and everything to the south went to the south tree pile. That way, nobody was getting in each other's way. So, it got to be a well-coordinated effort, even though it's in the middle of a disaster.
Well, and I know that Commissioner Schmidt went down and then my husband and I, Senator Ernie Otten, and I went down and it was the next day. And it was, I, I mean, the pictures really don't do it justice.
Right.
And, but I have to congratulate you for what you have done and coordinated all that together. And just watching what has happened through that whole thing, I cannot commend you enough for the actions that were taken to restore that town. So, thank you so much.
All I do is try and stay out of the way. So, you know, and Tuesday morning, it didn't take long, Kevin Tiergard from Kell called me. Says, "I'm coming down." So, I had him, got him lined up with the mayor and his side by side and took him around town that way because that's, we didn't, said, "I don't want you just driving anywhere on your own." So, that way, he got his pictures. And then we didn't have him getting in the way of anything either. And the next morning, he came back down. He says, "I can't believe how much you got accomplished in one day down here." So, the situation, as bad as it was, got handled as probably as good as it could. Everybody cooperated. And like I said, the food that was brought in was beyond measure. You probably gained five pounds while you were down there the whole time, so.
And one of the guys when we were down there, one of the fire department officials said that there were over, that next morning, that there were over 300 calves missing. Do you know what, where the herds stand at this point?
Well, that was from the lot west of town where it used to be Haveralls. The dairy bought that and they have calves there. 300 calves got out in the cornfield, but I think they found them all back.
You know, Harold, I went down, I went and got the old blue pickup and drove down there early Tuesday morning. And the first thing I ran into was a sheriff deputy. And he said, "I'm sorry, there's not a lot of anybody in." And I said, "I understand, but I'm a commissioner." And he said, "You're a commissioner?" Just a minute. I don't know if he went for verification or not, a little humor. But I drove into that town, Harold. I've never seen more devastation in my life. I, there wasn't, I mean, you couldn't move.
No.
Main street littered, everything, you know, from insulation to goodness sake. And I went down back again and I amazed at how much cleanup they have. And yeah, there's a lot of timber. If you had wood burners, you're ready for a decade or more. You know, the thing, Harold, and for commissioners, that I noticed, I drove around country roads a lot. And what's really sad is when you see acreages of, and roofs are gone off people's houses, you know, the tin come off. I saw one where all the corn is down flat and one, farmers were trying to low, or round up fat cattle that were in a cornfield with tractors. And I could only imagine, if you're a farmer and you got the best crop that you've had forever, you're driving over it with a tractor trying to round up steers and things like that. But, and I went by the dairy. The dairy really took a long, strong hit. And how many cattle they had to move in a short period of time.
Moved 15,000.
Yeah. And they had, I don't know how many cattle carriers they had down there. When I was down there, there were about 10 left. So, I bet their milking parlor and all that kind of stuff. But, Harold, it only goes to prove, and I would echo what Betty, our Commissioner Otten said. You know, sometimes we overlook the fact how well-coordinated we really are, how we get things done, how we collaborate, how people come together at these kinds of times. And, you know, it all comes from the top. And, Harold, I won't bore him, but I remember when we had the tornado in Lenox and who was in control. Do you mind if I tell that story?
I suppose you can.
We had this tornado in Lenox, South Dakota, and we had a lot of devastation and Harold's in his command post. And then Governor Janklow was there. And Governor Janklow kept trying to interrupt, well, our emergency management man. And this is kind of comical because he would come in and Harold would kindly turn to the governor and says, "I'll get to you when I'm ready." And that's when we had, we had prisoners, Harold, but they all had chainsaws at that time.
Yeah.
So, Harold, take a bow. Thank you on behalf of all of us. You got this done.
Really, what happened, you can attribute to all the volunteers and everybody that came to help.
And our highway department did really step up.
Yes.
I mean, I thought those guys did a tremendous job, so. Any other comments, commissioners, on from the disaster or Harold or anything else?
Harold, it's a magnificent response and you're to be credited for that. And if there is still assistance that people need, I hope we can get it to them. After what that Department of Corrections put this county through for the last year, I think it should be, we should have them on speed dial to get those inmates in here to get a little payback, right?
Well, you know, back in 2001, they brought them from Sioux Falls.
About Sioux Falls.
Two busloads.
Yeah.
And now they're bringing, these came from Yankton, so.
Yeah, I think they're using the minimum security, folks.
Right.
Is what they're doing now. But I drove through Hudson there on Sunday after coming back from my mother-in-law's house. And she lives six miles south of Rock Valley and they were in that, you know, that storm alley, if you will. There's a lot of corn down. Just, I mean, if folks don't understand how many trees, it's not just 200 by 60. It's about 30 or 40 feet tall. I don't think people realize how many trees are in that, looks like a darn football field almost, 40 feet high, full of trees there. And then those huge grain bins that are at the elevator in Hudson, they got, they are just ripped up on top. And so, there was a very powerful storm that went through there and tore that up. But those folks, they just, that is just what folks do in South Dakota when a storm comes through. It's in their DNA. They got to work and they cleaned it up. And they did a good job. And Hudson is still tore up, though. That's what folks need to realize.
That'll be a new norm in Hudson.
It will be.
You know, and the second day or whenever, another reporter came from Kell, wanted to talk to a farmer. So, I set him up with Jeff Cole south of town. And we went back into his field ways and I got a look at the back of the ethanol plant by Hudson, their whole leg is gone.
Yes.
And some of the conveyors on top of the bin, I don't know if they're going to be able to get it up and running by harvest. Because you don't just go to the store and buy another leg. They're engineered for each site. And a lot of people, you know, like you mentioned, Commissioner, where there's excellent corn crop coming, some of it now is flat and some's broken off. And I keep reminding people, you don't have a crop until it's in the combine tank. So, it looks good, but we got a long ways to go yet. So, hopefully. And we don't need any more recreation like this anytime soon. We had the flood last year and now we have this this year. So, that's about enough.
And the storm went from Turner County and it even hit Lenox really bad. And so, there's, I mean, trees were, it was incredible just to see these huge trees just snapped like toothpicks.
Yeah.
And when we went, we were going down the interstate, all of those electrical poles were just snapped. And it was, it was really devastating to see all that damage and what's got to be done.
I talked to the fire chief in Lenox Monday night and he says, "Well, we got some damage here, but we're going to get through that all right." So, Harrisburg got hit a little bit, worthy, not too bad, what I could tell. And so, I checked with the fire chief, so there probably worse people usually after something like that. And none of them seemed real excited or too worried. So, they were able to handle that on their own. Canton had some damage here. Fairview, not so bad. But, you know, Jerome Landishtew lives down there, just west of Fairview. And him and his folks were down there the first night. He drove all the way from where he lives to Hudson with a front end loader to help clear streets. The next three days, he was down there with the whole crew with chainsaws and equipment all without any charge. So, we did have a fuel truck come in once a day, just to fuel up equipment. And so, that was a help for some of that too. But there's a lot of people like that that need to be commended for what they did. I called them and told them myself, you know, how much we appreciated everything he did, so.
You know, Harold, if you wanted to bring them forward, we'd be welcome to come to the commission sometime and offer them an official thank you on behalf of the commission of those people.
Yeah, and maybe we can send them something, you know. We'll worry about that in a little bit longer here.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harold.
Thank you.
Thank you, Harold.
I gotta get back downstairs and talk to Elliot.
See if you got any money left. Now, we have opportunity for public comments, for any public comments that needs to be made. You're welcome to come.
Good morning. Scott Montgomery, Fairview. I just want to commend all this, everybody that's put their effort into saving Hudson. It was a mess down there and it's a mess out in rural area. And Harold is a big, huge part of that and I just want to commend them. On another note, I've been part of a group that's been researching the actions of some departments in Lincoln County. And we believe we've discovered that civil rights of some Lincoln County residents have been violated. I just ask that you be in contact with me and try to get us on the agenda where we can further discuss that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Linda Montgomery, Fairview, South Dakota. I want to address a public comment of the last two evening meetings that we had, the last two months. Public comment at the meeting was changed at, to the beginning of the meeting instead of the end. I respect that sometimes that needs to be done, but I think we probably know that ahead of time. And I think that any major change that is total public issue, that it's public comment, that they need to also be aware that there's going to be a change. And I request and beg and I would like the people respected that those changes be made on Friday before the meeting, when the agenda comes out, so that they can manage their time. A lot of times, excuse me, when public comments at the end, they wait to come till later and then to find out that public comment has been moved to the beginning is rather disrespectful, I feel. And I just would really like you to consider, not if you need to move public comment, please address it the Friday before. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment come before the commission? If not, we will then have a commissioner report. Any commissioners that want to offer any reports at all?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I've already put down, already commented that I had gone down to Hudson and seen that and wanted to thank Harold again. This last week was 4H Achievement Days and Wendy Sweeter and her staff took, you know, had to take into account all of that storm damage that came through Lenox, which changed her entire meeting going forward because they had a huge tent set up, they were going to feed people. Well, people didn't even get registered on time because they were cleaning up their own property. And the gal that was going to feed everybody was, couldn't get there because she was cleaning up her stuff. So, I want to give a huge shout out to Wendy Sweeter for all of her having to rearrange everything on 4H and she did it just very professionally. And then on 7/31, there's a, I'm part of the team on the High Injury Network for Lincoln County. This is on roads. And they said that 75% of serious collisions are on 3% of the county roadway network. And I wanted to recognize Chad Skiles as also being a member of that team. So, and then on August 4th, it was the South Dakota Monthly Membership Meeting that we didn't have to attend, but it was doing, it was going over what we needed to do for private meetings and that kind of stuff. But I know that Drew is going to be bringing that forward to the commission itself. So, I just wanted to commend everybody on their professionalism for what happened during the storm.
Thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I too want to thank those kids at the 4H. They put on a great fair or great achievement days. They put a lot of work into those animals as well as the static displays as well, making food, making clothing, furniture, stuff like that. Those kids did a real great job of putting that on. They put a lot of work into it. And you could tell they put a lot of work into it. So, I want to thank those kids for giving it their all. And I want to thank Wendy Sweeter and her team for putting on a great achievement days. I saw, or I know Commissioner Otten was down there and I saw you, Commissioner Schmidt. And I saw former Commissioner Gillespie there and former Commissioner Gibbon there. So, there were a lot of folks who were down there. I think we were down there, what, Jim, on Thursday night? Is that what it was? Yeah, they did a good barbecue and then they sold the animals off and everything. So, those kids just did a fantastic job down there. And the other thing I want to say is, I have not been down there in a number of months. And let me just say this. If you have not been down to that Lincoln County 4H complex, is what I'll call it now, that is quite the undertaking. And I just want to say this, for those folks, this county has put a lot of property taxpayer money into that, those facilities in conjunction with private donations. And that is quite the setup. And I said it a few years ago, but I think maybe we'll have a county fair out there someday.
We will.
I would have liked to have seen it from the beginning, but, you know, it's like wine gets better with age, right?
I think so.
And then I also want to talk about, we had our open meetings training yesterday. I sat on that thing at 11:00. Good training. There are some unanswered questions I had from the training. Not everything was addressed that should have. So, my understanding is here at the county, we're going to do some additional training, right, Drew? And I hope we do that and get some clarification. And maybe there's some changes to state law we need to look at as well. And maybe this commission will forward that to our legislators for review. But it was good training and very helpful. So, I appreciate the county association for facilitating that. I think they, the presenter was from the Attorney General's Office.
Yes.
And so, that was good to do. And then just lastly, we can't put a sharp enough point on this, but those folks down in the southern half of the county did magnificent work cleaning up after the storms. And we want to give them a pat on the back and they just did great pulling together like that, cleaning up after all that storm damage. So, I want to thank them for having that pride that they do in their communities. So, that's all I got, Mr. Chair.
I might follow up on the Achievement Days. I thought they did a fantastic job. The only thing I can tell you is that I was the proud purchaser of the largest rooster that won first prize of the, when the auction was there. I will that to a gentleman who raises cattle. And I told him he can't raise cattle, so maybe he can start with chickens. But for $110, you can buy the largest rooster that was there. And then I collaborated with some other ones and we bought- And then, I collaborated with some other ones, and we bought a, played it for a championship barrel hog out there, so I've got two certificates now for the rooster and the hog. Brought that home to my wife, and she wasn't impressed at all. Paul, what was the name of that Economic Development Group out of Aberdeen? Do you know, remember that? We get membership there, I didn't know that.
It's the Economic Development Professionals Association.
Okay, yeah. They put on a economic development program in Mitchell last week, of which I attended and participated, along with Chris Jacobson, our director for the South Dakota Association of County Commissioners. And not to belabor it, but what came out of that, we were talking about how counties and cities should work together on grant applications and better communications and townships. And, you know, I like to brag about our county, but really, when you really look at what Toby has done upstairs, whenever there is a development that comes into a township, he notifies the township. I mean, the communication can't be much better than that. And the questions that were asked on county government is eye-opening on how little people really do know about how government, how county government works, and their roles and their responsibilities that they have. And it only points out that, if you're in county government or a commission, you're on constant education, you're constantly explaining to this because once is not enough. And you, and you, a question was asked, what happens when counties cannot pay their bills and they can't get their, take care of their county constitutional responsibilities, and they've tried to pass opt-outs, and the electorate says, "No, you cannot," and then you are in complete deficient. The governor can declare you in that state, and then what happens ultimately is that the surrounding counties will assume the assets and liabilities of that county, and you will be disintegrated into, that county will actually disappear. The reason I say that is Bennett County, once when Governor Rounds was there and I was chair of that association, that was actively looked at, and Governor Rounds certainly didn't want to have a county defunct, so they put a lot of federal prisoners in their new jail, which was causing them. So, anyway, I was amazed at what we left there, thinking we got a lot of work to do, but I always come back from any of those things and look at our own county and how well we've done that. And at some time, when we get to our budget, I would like to point out how many times Minniah County has passed an opt-out, and how many times Lincoln County has not done that for their general purposes. So, anyway, we got a lot to be proud of, from the people and our facilities and all that kind of stuff. So, is there anything, I thank my fellow commissioners for their dedication to this whole thing. There's a lot of time and effort goes into this job. Is there any other comments you'd like to make? If not, we don't have an executive session, Drew? Okay? Okay, it looks like our agenda has been completed, so we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Commissioner Erns, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Putnam. Will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Erns?
Yes.
Otten?
Yes.
Putnam?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.